Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Thursday, February 16th, 2023, February 16th, regular board meeting of the Miami'sburg City Schools. Would everyone please rise for the pledge?
Our pledge is allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone. Thank you for attending. I have a real call, please.
Mr. Amsler?
Here.
Mr. Daffler?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Nice?
Here.
Mr. Toadvine?
Present.
Dr. Blessing?
Present.
Mr. Holman?
Here.
And I myself am present.
Okay. Next, we have on the agenda the adoption of today's agenda, which is February 16th, 2023. The approval of the minutes for February 16th, 2023. IME is approval of the financial report.
Financial report, yes. It's in there and updated, and revenue is trending better than it was forecasted, and we're at a percent and a half higher than the same period last year.
Okay, thank you. We have a recognition of our citizens and our staff. We have two retirees this evening. Mine's cut off. I don't know what it is.
For the retirees, it's Kason Jackson.
Sorry. My agenda is cut off, so I can't see this. So the student of the month today, for the month we're going to honor today is Kason Jackson. He's from Bear Elementary School.
So the Miami'sburg January District Student of the Month is second grader Kason Jackson. Kason was nominated by his Bear Elementary School teachers Stephanie Penrod and Jennifer Rickard. They said that Kason is a wonderful student that displays all of our paws on a daily basis. He is a problem solver. When things get tough or difficult, he never gives up. He thinks of new ways to help him accomplish his goals and then sees them through. Kason acts responsibly by help cleaning up this classroom and make sure everything is in the right place before he leaves school for the day. He works and plays safely. When he notices something around him that is having trouble or following our expectations, he politely reminds them of what to do, either by explaining it to them or leading by example. He even loves to help other students when he finishes his work early. And lastly, Kason shows his respect for our school, our classroom, and his fellow students by treating everyone with kindness and encouraging others to do the same. We are so proud of what a strong leader he has become here at Bear Elementary School. So congratulations, Mr. Kason.
Kason, on behalf of the Board of Education, we are presenting you with a medallion that says Student of the Month. And I think you got a really cool silver dollar from Shaw Myers, right? From the bank? That was pretty cool, huh? Has he been out to two percent of hats?
Yeah.
Great. So, Kason, who did you bring along tonight? I think you have a pretty big fan club out there this month. Is your brother, is your brother cousin back there? Is that your little brother? Well, would you like to get a picture with your teacher? And then we'll have your family come up next. How's that sound? Would that work?
Oh, you're out. Just the first two.
Family? Come on up to get a picture. Can we put it on the website? Can we put it on the website?
Yes.
Yes?
Come on, I love you. I love you.
Let's take a hug and clap, right?
You know, Kason, I think that's the first time that Mrs. Moore had to use the Pan M to get everybody in. That's nice. Means you're well-loved. Thank you for coming, everybody. It's wonderful. Next on the agenda is the recognition and appreciation of our retirees. And Mrs. Barbara Hoffman, who has 30 years. She's not here this evening. And Kathy Schmitz also is here this evening, at 30 years.
Present this to you. I think they're going to read it to everyone. So it's going to be the whole of the resolution of appreciation.
Get it? Come on, have it. It's up on the screen.
It's on the screen.
Oh! It's on the screen. Go ahead. Okay. Resolution of appreciation. Whereas Kathy Schmitz has rendered 30-year service to the Miami'sburg City Schools, and whereas Kathy Schmitz's performance, conduct, and sincerity in carrying out her duty has exemplified the highest level of achievement, and whereas Kathy Schmitz has distinguished herself as a transportation department employee, now therefore be it resolved that the Miami'sburg City Schools Board of Education pass this resolution as a token of its appreciation for her outstanding conduct, and that such resolution become part of the permanent minutes of said Board of Education, February 16th, 2023. Now you've got to give a speech. Okay.
I wrote that down.
It's on the record. Make sure that's in the minutes.
That's in the minutes.
So there you go. And we'll get a picture. Steve, you want to come up and get a picture too?
Sure. Hey Kathy, if you ring your bell, I think you'll get some reading. You're a halo.
Congratulations, Steve.
Kathy's five, but I'm not. I really want to thank Kathy. Kathy has been a fabulous bus driver. She's, I remember just teaching at Bauer. She always has the best interest of kids at heart. Very, very dedicated employee here all the time. Going to miss you, miss you as a friend. But I did write down that you said that you would be interested in coming back. But thank you so much. And I know your kiddies that you drive every day are really going to miss you. You have a special bond with them, and they love you. So Kathy, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to the board discussion.
I mean, have the middle school. We jumped ahead, I think. It was. Say it was shit.
So we'll go to the Miami'sburg Middle School presentation. On the next page.
So for my presentation this evening, I have some things that are happening at the middle school that we want to talk about. But I also want to highlight, because one of the best things about the middle school are the staff and the students. So featured in my presentation are some staff members. But I brought a co-host this evening, a superstar from the middle school, that I want to read you some of her background. Riley Davis. I'm old enough, I need glasses. Riley Davis is a seventh grader on Team Five, and she has quite the background. So she is a host of The Riley Show on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. She started out at five years old on social media using her voice to educate kids about Black history with her Fun Facts for Kids videos. These videos have been used by educators all around the country in their classrooms and in community centers. Riley is a talented actress who has performed with the Vandelia Youth Theater, Children's Performing Arts of Miami'sburg, and she had the lead youth role in The Death of a Lie, which premiered at the Dayton Arts Institute. Her work with the PBS Kids Think includes award-winning programming as well as shows focused on Girls in STEM, statewide curriculum celebrating the Wright Brothers, and she voices one of the characters for the animated show Mr. C. the Science Guy. She's also done work with Lustra Silk Kids, True Star Junior, and commercials for the Dayton Metro Library. Riley is the founding member of the rap group The Candy Girls and produced a music video that highlighted talented dancers from all over the city. She was the celebrity youth host at the Columbus HBCU Classic and keynote speaker for the Dayton MLK March in 2022. She is the Ohio Ambassador for Project IM, where she collects donations for homeless teens. Riley was the host of the documentary Kids Coping During COVID, and she was an official ambassador for the US Census. In 2022, she became an official spokesperson for the state of Ohio for kids getting vaccinated and received special recognition from Senator Sherrod Brown. She was also nominated as one of the top kid influencers during the Atlanta Kids' Choice Awards. And she said she is not nervous about this at all this evening for all that she says. I am more than her, so she's going to be awesome, I know it. The first group I want to talk about at the middle school that is one of our superstars is Team Thirteen. Team Thirteen's curriculum, let me back up. Team Thirteen includes Michelle Lieber, Nicole Dunn, and Melissa Wells as intervention specialists. And instructional assistants include Carrie Arthur, Shawna Fox, Tracy Harvey, Hannah Perkins, Amy Brady, Ellen Brewster, Melissa Dennis, Kathy Jarvis, and Evelyn Goodrich. So Team Thirteen's curriculum includes daily living skills, vocational skills, and transitional skills. And one of the ways they cover those skills is what we call, is doing what we call Cafe 301. And so three or four times a year, they will create a meal, plan a meal, budget a meal, shop for the meal, organize the meal, and then on a Friday, staff have the opportunity to come have lunch for less than $5, and they get to meet then all the Team Thirteen students. The next one, if you want to add to your calendar, is March 3rd. It's a great way for you to meet our Team Thirteen students and staff and have lunch for less than $5. It's going to be a soup and dessert bar. And so the students then use those Cafe 301 funds for all the activities that they'll do throughout the year. So they go to the library, they visit St. James, they've been to Locum Media. At Christmas time, they visited nursing homes and hospitals and did some singing and activities. So it is a fundraiser for their activities throughout the year. Team Thirteen also does a recycling program in the building. Once a week, the students go around, collect the recycling bins from classrooms that are participating, and then take it to our recycling dumpster. So that's a neat program that they're taking care of for the middle school.
Okay, so next up is Be Kind Wednesday. So every single Wednesday here at MMS, we all have Be Kind Wednesday. So basically, it's like different groups around the building, whether it's the cheerleaders, track team, volleyball team, and sometimes even staff. And they hold up like cute little signs that say like, hi, have a nice day, hello, how are you? And they just greet you as you walk in the building. It's like a good motivation for the students to go on with their week and just have a good day, especially if you might not have a good morning or you might be having like a test or something later on in the day. And even the staff members and the kids can participate by wearing like kindness shirts every Wednesday. And we do this every week, so it's a good way for all the students to make sure that we know that MMS is a safe place.
Something new at the middle school this year we're doing is a mentoring program. So every adult in the building will have eight to 10 students that they are mentoring. They meet one to two times a month, and they're looking at grades, attendance, behavior, talking about goal-setting, relationship skills, communication skills. Team Two this year took on Project Linus, which is the donation of blankets to homeless or kids in need. And so in November, they started creating and working on crafting blankets. And then in December, they distributed them to kids in other communities, which was a cool opportunity for them. New to the middle school this year is our World Exploratory Class. And every year, we've had French or Spanish. Eighth graders can take French or Spanish if they meet certain requirements. This year, we added World Exploratory, which any student can take. It's nine weeks of French, nine weeks of Spanish, and then the hope is that they'll engage in French or Spanish at the high school. And so we're trying to grab students that at the middle school prior to wouldn't have had an experience in foreign language, that are world language, that they can now take at the high school and middle school. And so there's just about a 45-second clip there of the teachers.
Hello, I'm senior associate with the Spanish teacher. And I'm a doctor of our French teacher. We're here to tell you about the exploratory world language class being offered to eighth graders next year at MMS. Mrs. Smallwood, can you tell me why you're so excited about this new class?
Sure. It will be one semester, so nine weeks of Spanish and nine weeks of French or Spanish. It's open to anyone regardless of grades. And it'll be a fun, life-hearted way to get some exposure to the world languages that are offered at Miami'sburg High School.
That's right. Students who are considering taking a language as a freshman but are not quite ready to sign up as an eighth grader will get a chance to learn a bit about both French and Spanish here at MMS. What kind of topics are we going to cover?
We will cover a lot of possible topics such as foods, holidays, clothing, greetings, and geography.
Okay. If this sounds great to you, bienvenu.
And bienvenidos.
Welcome to the world language exploratory class.
Adios.
Say au revoir.
The next person we want to talk about is Mentor Clinton. Mr. Clinton is the MMS Day's shift staff custodian and is responsible for the everyday smooth running of our facilities. He takes care of messes of any kind, fixes of any kind, and often he takes care of things that are outside of his job and responsibilities, like jump-starting Mrs. Thomas's car and replacing her battery. He's always smiling, pleasant, and friendly to the students and staff and willing to help out when he is needed. You can also find him at sporting events and extracurricular activities, either lending a helping hand or supporting MMS students.
This year, our eighth graders got to visit the CTC, which was a new field trip for us. We haven't done it in a couple of years. All 400 eighth graders went over a span of four days. We took 100 kids a day. They had the opportunity to visit CTC, do some hands-on activities, and they really enjoyed it. We had kids talking for weeks afterwards about all the awesome things that they got to see at the CTC. So that was a, that was a good thing for them.
Next up, I'm going to be talking about Mrs. Rumpf. Mrs. Rumpf is responsible for the smooth running of the MMS cafeteria, including breakfast and lunch. Mrs. Rumpf moved into the position of the MMS Nutrition Service Manager and jumped into creating meals for students that they enjoy and look forward to eating. She's always smiling, friendly, and goes out of her way to provide a great cafeteria experience for the employees, students, and staff. Also, I'm going to tell you guys about Career Adventure Day. So a few months ago, every single seventh grader at MMS took a survey. So the survey was basically about different jobs and aspiring things that you might want to do when you're older. Then, a few months later, we got our results, and we all got split into different color groups. The color groups had something to do with that job that you ended up getting on your survey. So for example, I was in the red team, which was for like community service and like building and business and all that kind of thing. Then we all took a bus to the Dayton Metro Library, and we got to learn about each and every one of those different jobs. And we actually got to do hands-on things and career activities. And we also got to talk with people who actually do those jobs that we might want to do in the future and after we got to eat pizza.
New to the middle school this year, and actually just started up this week, we've been able to offer a Girls on the Run program. We have two community volunteers who are helping run the program. We have about 10 to 12 girls who will be meeting twice a week for an hour and a half, and each session is a focus on a curriculum that they have with the focuses on the five key parts, body, brain, heart, spirit, and then how sixth to eighth grade girls connect. And then there is a running or an exercise portion. And at the end of their season, they do have a 5K culminating activity. If you were to pop into the MMS eighth-grade band room right now, you'll see an exciting thing that they're working on. We had a composer from Columbus reach out to Mr. Winter Shimer and ask students to create an original piece of music. So they are currently working on writing an original piece of music. They will perform at their May 15th band concerts, and then it will forever be known as written and composed by Miami'sburg Middle School eighth-grade band students.
Last up, I'm going to be talking about Ms. McElroy and Mrs. Hobbs. Mrs. McElroy and Mrs. Hobbs are responsible for keeping most student things behind the scenes running smoothly. If they are not working one-on-one with a student, they are working on the master schedule, helping a family with outside resources, or helping a student with clothing or food needs and resources, or mediating an argument between friends. They help students be prepared mentally and emotionally for the classroom. Mrs. Hobbs and Mrs. McElroy help plan both our CTC and Career Adventure Days.
And then the last thing I wanted to talk about, then I'm kind of excited about to have been able to be a part of this year is our Equity Fellows Program. Myself, Robin Lathers, and Onika Tucker, along with other administrators and teachers in the district, have been able to participate in this led by Dave Taylor, Superintendent of Dayton Early College Academy. It is a two to four-year program. We are in our first year this year. It's kind of a focus on self. So this year, we're just looking at our cultures, our beliefs, our philosophies, and those of people around us, and making sure as we are teaching and learning and interacting with students and staff that we are sensitive to others, cultures, ideas, and beliefs. It's been kind of an exciting activity, and I'm looking forward to where that's going to go in the, in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Hey Riley. I hope I'm alive to vote for you for president. Thank you, make a good one.
Thank you.
You want to say something about our meeting yesterday? But, teacher?
Oh, sure. Another update that we've been working on. It is, we're coming up on hiring season. We have some retirees that we're going to be, we've recognized already, and also some resignations. And so as we're looking toward next year, we are going to try to be really intentional in our hiring, and we're going to be attending some job fairs this spring with some of our teachers of color to make sure that our teaching staff reflects the demographics of our students. So we're looking to add to our teaching ranks some more diverse educators. So if anyone knows any new or upcoming educators that are in the Miami'sburg area, we've got some openings, I think in terms of math, elementary guidance counselor, science, special education. So yeah, so we're looking forward to, we've got a job fair coming up in March. We might even spread and visit Indiana and a few other places where we can find folks that might be interested in being in a more urban area such as Cincinnati or Dayton, so that we can tap into those new teachers that are graduating from colleges. So we're going to be doing that. It's really exciting. We have, we're working with David Taylor. He is part of our group. Asante Hill, a former graduate of Miami'sburg, is also helping us. So we're looking forward to seeing this, this new initiative and hopefully have a lot of success.
Okay. And I have a little motion to. Sorry, my paperwork is just a little bit different than what I hoped it would be. Okay, we move on to H, which is board discussion. And I will, Dr. Blessing for that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Toadvine. Just four updates as we wrapped up our town halls. We had eight town halls over the last month or so. And we want to just kind of give, we had eight town halls. We had a total of 300 parents and communities attend total those eight town halls. We had 203 staff, and we had, I think about 35 or 40 patient students that attended those town halls as well. So during those town halls, we were able to discuss the different elementary programming ideas and get some new ideas, make some changes, hear a lot of input, have some questions. So we've gathered a lot of data from those town halls. You can visit our website at miamisburgcityschools.org. And on the main page, we have a elementary programming tab. And if you click on that tab, you can see all of our elementary programming information. You can also see the minutes from each of those town halls. So I think they're trying to show that to you right now. Just go to the main homepage. You don't have to go, yeah, and then scroll to the middle. Keep going up a little bit higher. Oops. And it's.
It's not responding.
Okay. And there it is, elementary programming tab. Thank you. And then, as you can see, the town hall notes are kind of toward the middle. And all eight town hall notes of all of the feedback questions we received as well as the attendants are on there. The slide deck that we've used at all the presentations is there. And just some other data points as to the why that we're having these discussions. So please check that out. We have a board work session coming up on Tuesday. That is February the 21st at 6:00. And it will be at our Memorial Building, which is on Sixth Street, right between the Public Library and Kinder Elementary. And that board work session will begin at 6:00. During that time, anyone who wants to attend, it's going to be in the auditorium. You will have the opportunity to hear the board have a discussion regarding the programming ideas, any questions they may have for our elementary principals, if they're willing to share any feedback or questions they might have about current elementary programming. Our Teachers Association leaders will be there. Our cabinet will be there. And then, since it is a board meeting, we will have the ability for public to ask some questions for further clarification. I mean, it's just, it's a board meeting, so it'll be a public comment. So we'll have 30 minutes of public comments if anyone would like to speak to the board during that work session. So that's just kind of moving on to the next steps. We also have a survey right now that we're doing. So it was sent to our parents and our staff in regard to just collecting more information about the ideas presented. That survey will be open until Monday morning so that the board has some time to read through all of the comments and the data prior to the work session. So if there's more clarification that they need. So those are just some high points of what we're working on currently right now with our elementary programming.
Thank you. And I know I already spent probably an hour and a half just reading some of the comments and stuff that we have. And I had a lot of very good comments.
Yes.
Helpful. May I have a motion for items A through H?
I'll move for the approval of meeting opening items A through H.
Second.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Okay, that is passed. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Item A is, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student trips with Kyle Doggett, MHS varsity swimming and diving, Canton, Ohio, February 23rd through the 25th. Case Gank, Kelly Wilbur, Jenny Townsend, Lauren Bates, Nicole McDonald, and Cheryl Wilbur. Varsity competition and game day cheerleaders in Sunbury, Ohio, being March 3rd through the 4th. John Good and Mike Whitserman, girls gymnastics team, Columbus, Ohio, March 3rd through the 4th, 2023. Sean Schooley, information technology, BPA, Columbus, Ohio, March 9th through the 10th. Nathan Cormack, Jeff Turner, Greg Pitroff, Adam Price, and Sean Schooley, state wrestling tournament, Columbus, Ohio, March 11th through the 13th. Any comments? So we can move on to item C. Next is the approval of instructional materials. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the use and purchase of the following instructional materials for grades six through eight. Reveal Math, put out by McGraw-Hill. Ms. Moore?
So we were up last year for a curriculum for our math, grades six through 12. And the high school went ahead and adopted this time last year, but the middle school wanted to take a little more time to review the products, and because last year it was coming back, they wasn't have a lot of time to elaborate. So we reviewed the material. They were able to review demos from multiple publishers, multiple different resources that are out there, online print. And we did have one more year on our current program, so we were able to push the middle school decision back a year without running into it. So they finally made the decision, and we're going to go with McGraw-Hill, which is what they currently have for them now. So this is just the updated version of Reveal Math that the middle school grades six through eight will adopt to continue, or it'll be a five-year adoption.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
What did they like most about it?
Honestly, it provides a lot of differentiation, aligns with the standards, a lot of customization that they can do, so they can reorganize for a whole group of kids, individualized kids, and small groups of kids.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll go to item C. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the use and purchase of the following instructional materials. Did I just read that?
Yes.
Crazy tonight, aren't I? Item D, approval of the tuition-free senior enrollments. It is recommended by the superintendent and the high school principal, Mr. Black, that the Board of Education approves Jenna Miller and Grace Stockton for tuition-free enrollment for their senior year. This permission will only be granted in accordance with the board policy file, JECB.
These students have moved during their senior year, so it's just part of our board policy to allow them to graduate from Miamisburg.
Okay, thank you. Anyone? Okay, let's move on to item E. It is to approve the class of 2023 early graduates from Miamisburg High School. Mr. Black, the principal of Miamisburg High School, has recommended that Eliana Erpst, Savannah Moller, Jason Schaefer, Ellie Smith, Dakota Thurman, and Zoe Sunderman for early graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements.
So it's exciting. I think we're up to about 25 early grads at this point in the year. So congratulations to our early graduates. I think a lot of them are going on to begin their next phase, whether it be a college or the workforce, or even potentially military. So we congratulate them.
Thank you. Anyone? Item F. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following resolution. Whereas Miamisburg City School District, number 44396 of 540 East Park Avenue, Montgomery County, Ohio, has satisfied all the requirements for membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association, a voluntary, unincorporated, not-for-profit, and whereas the Board of Education, governing board, and its administration desire for the schools with one or more grades at the seventh through 12th grade levels under their jurisdiction to be voluntary members of the OHSAA, which is the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education, the governing board, that Miamisburg Middle School and Miamisburg High School do hereby voluntary renew membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association, that in doing so, the Constitution bylaws, regulations, and business rules of the OHSAA are hereby adopted by this board as an administrative responsibility, notwithstanding the foregoing, the board reserves the right to raise the minimum standards as it deems appropriate for the schools and students under its jurisdiction. We'll have somebody speak on that in a minute. Be it further resolved that the schools under this board's jurisdiction agree to conduct their athletic programs in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, business rules, interpretations, and decisions of the OHSAA, and that corporate and will cooperate fully and timely with the Executive Director's Office of the Ohio High School Athletic Association in all matters related to interscholastic athletic programs of the schools. Furthermore, the schools under this board's jurisdiction shall be rendered, I'm sorry, the board's jurisdiction shall be the primary enforcers of the OHSAA Constitution, the bylaws, the regulations, business rules, and interpretations of the rulings rendered by the Executive Director's Office. The administrative heads of these schools understand that failure to discharge the duty of primary enforcement may result in fines, removal from tournaments, suspension for membership, and/or such penalties as prescribed by Bylaw 11. The OHSAA will be charging fees for participation to each school district at $50 for a high school sport. No membership dues for seventh and eighth grade sports. Now I can't talk anymore.
This is just our, we have to do this annually, so it just, you know, it helps govern our athletics and our conference.
Yep, next year I'll let Mr. Blevins read that.
Sounds good. We'll have him practice.
Any questions? Nope. Okay. Item G. The board shall appoint Justin Blevins, treasurer, CFO, and Katie Lucas, director of student services, as an alternate to attend public records training required for board membership by applicable law, namely Revised Code 109.43. I think that's you, Mr. Blevins.
But we just recommend that every year as part of our, Mr. Blevins will handle all public records requests, and Mrs. Lucas will assist as well. So we can't wait to hear their report on how the training goes. We'll try to limit it to a half an hour to highlight the key points.
Okay. Item H. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda, items A through G.
I move for the approval of consent agenda items A through G.
And second?
My second.
Okay, we have a first by Mr. Daffler, second by Mrs. Neese.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Hamzler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes. And that is passed. We'll move on to human resources agenda items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports, and what I'm about to read will be for items B also. Employment in the Miamisburg City School District is contingent upon the candidate submitting to and passing a BCII and an FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with adopted It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report. The supplemental stipend is certificated and classified. Anyone want to comment on that?
Mr. Homan?
Just business as usual.
Okay. Moving on, item C. It is recommended by the Board of Education that Mr. Justin Blevins be awarded a revised administrative contract as treasurer, CFO of the Miamisburg City School District, shall be effective starting February 1st, 2023, through July 31st of 2025, with all terms and benefits as contained in his employment contract. The contract was approved on January 19th of 2023, and was only prorated, calculated through 6/30/2023, and it should have been prorated, calculated 7/31 through 2023. The treasurer, CFO's new contract for each school year starts August 1st, and no other changes were made to the contract, and it should be approved when it was approved on 1/19/2023. That said?
Just exactly what you read is what happened, so.
Okay.
Justin thought he was working a month free for us, so, good calculation, so.
Yeah, we can't get it by him, can we? He's pretty sharp with the numbers. Okay, next is item D. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following settlement agreement as presented. It is the Miamisburg Settlement Agreement, PDF 64KB.
I can touch, I can talk about that. When Jean Wartenger went from a bus driver to secretary, and the calculation was made, longevity was not included in her hourly rate, so this goes back and fixes her hourly rate with her longevity, so.
Okay. I would say that she is a fine employee also, and one of my students years ago. Item E. It's approval of human resources, items A through D. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve human resource items A through D.
Mr. Blevins? Roll call, please.
I'll second it.
Oh, I'm sorry, second. I haven't been drinking or anything, I'm a rama.
Roll call.
Mr. Hamzler?
That's been 40 years ago.
Uh, yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to agreements and contracts. Item A, the superintendent and treasurer, CFO recommend the approval of the attached agreements with the Warren County Educational Service Center for student services at the WCESC Learning Center as presented.
Mrs. Lucas can touch on that.
It's a contract for specialized placement for a student requiring more services than what we're able to provide them in district.
Okay, thank you. Item B. It is recommended by the superintendent and the director of business that the Board of Education approve the attached agreement as presented, and that's Miamisburg Envy Update 21523, it's a PDF 173KB.
So this agreement, we've been working with Band Boosters over the last couple years to replace their box truck. And so last year, we kind of talked about, the district is also in need for a box truck as well, so they've raised a nice portion of money. You'll see the $50,000 donation tonight that will go for the purchase of the truck. And so during the week, that will help our maintenance crews with a lot of lifting of heavy furniture and moving with the lift gate and ramps and to do that. So it's nice to kind of partner with that, and both groups get to use it, and we both benefit, and we're sharing the costs with them, so it's a great deal.
Okay, thank you, it sounds good. Item C is authorizing the request for proposal process. The superintendent requests authority to begin the request for proposal process to procure a contractor for the middle school front parking lot pavement project as presented.
Mr. Homan?
So we, as part of our capital improvement plan, and we talked about this earlier, is the repavement of the front parking lot at the middle school. We do have some water drainage issues out there, and so the front portion of that, we'd like to go out and basically bid it to see what we're able to get, instead of just getting just three quotes and doing it that way, kind of go through the process and do it. They will actually mill the entire front parking lot, and then the parent pickup circle around that will be recoded and asphalt sealed for that, so. So as soon as we do this, this gives me approval to go out and start drawing it up with our architect, so. And then once we get those back, then you'll have an opportunity to accept the bids or reject the bids, and then we'll go from there, so.
Thank you, sir. Next is approval of the agreements and contracts, items A through C. Do I have a motion?
I move for the approval of agreement and contracts A Alpha through C Charlie.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Mr. Hamzler, second from Mr. Daffler. Roll call.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Hamzler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Okay, and that's passed. Next, we're going to move on to the financial agenda items A through E. Item A, it's the approval of transfers, school fees waived. The treasurer, CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following transfers. These transfers are for school fees waived during August through December of 2022. All transfers are made in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 5705.14. Uniformed school supplies for Bauer, $3,635. Uniformed school supplies for Bear, $1,530. School supplies for Kinder, $3,390. Jane Chance, $2,160. Mark Twain, $2,190. Mound, $1,770. Medler, $1,740. Uniformed school supplies for the Miamisburg Middle School, $10,799.68. Uniformed school supplies for the high school, $22,716.50. Class fees for the high school, $118, $94, $180, $158. Okay. Anyone want to speak to that? Nope. Okay. Item B. It is recommended by the treasurer, CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. Report is the appropriations resolution, and the amended official certificate of estimated resources dated February of 2022.
This is just a compliance update.
Okay, thank you. Item C. The treasurer, CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the following purchases as presented. $59,000 for the transportation for students from other sources. Money comes from transportation from other sources. $187,563 technical equipment for the middle school. That'll be from Epson Bright Link. $123,150.21 for new textbooks for math for the middle school. Ms. Moore?
Yep, I can talk about two of them. The textbooks for the math is the math adoption I talked about earlier. The students will have online accounts every year, and then it's consumable workbooks. So we get a new shipment every summer of consumable workbooks for the students. The technical equipment for the middle school are interactive projectors. The middle school was one of the first ones to get them, and we kind of had a bad batch. They're not lasting as long as we thought, so they're going to get a full replacement of their projectors this summer. I think that'll make the middle school teachers very happy.
Thank you. Mr. Homan? Want to say anything about the transportation?
I think Mrs. Lucas.
That's actually me.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we, you know, with McKinney-Vento homeless, foster care, a lot of outside individual routes that have to occur, you've seen, you've approved different quotes for some of those transportation routes. Assist Services is one of the companies that we use for the majority of it. So this purchase order is the bulk of students that we are transporting to other locations outside the district.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions about that? Approximately how many students are we transmitting from outside the district because of being homeless and so forth?
You catch me off guard with that exact number, but we probably, we probably have a good 20, 25 kids that we're transporting to various locations outside the district, from outside the district to us.
I only ask that question because I knew it was significant and I thought it would be nice for people to know, you know, what's really going on there.
And that's for a variety of reasons, that's not just homeless, that's foster care, that's also just individualized outside placements as well.
Yeah, I know my wife had a homeless student several years ago and they're still very close friends, which is kind of neat. Item D, the treasurer CFO recommends the Board of Education approve the treasurer to request tax advance payments from Montgomery County Auditor for the 2023 calendar year as presented.
This is just common practice, to collect some revenue early.
Okay, me in a few words. Okay, thank you. You know, you know anything about how, how is that going as far as, you know, anything yet? He's brand new, so, you know, I don't want to put him on the spot here, but.
I was just told to speak less than you know and have more than you show, so.
Excellent. That was a wise person.
Can you tell he's the opposite of John, who was a talker and?
He'll come out of his shell getting a little bit. Okay. Item E, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the financial items A through D. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for the approval of financial items A through D.
Okay, second please.
Second.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Okay, and that has passed. Move on to the acceptance of donations. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's O18 account unless indicated otherwise. $50,000 from the Myersburg Band Boosters to Myersburg City Schools for the purchase of a box truck. $3,500 from the Viking Boosters Association to the Myersburg City Schools for the gymnastics floor replacement. $500 from the Viking Cheer Association to the Myersburg City Schools for the gymnastics floor replacement. The following donations were made to the Myersburg City Schools for the Campus Quest Project. $250 from Donald Shade, third payment towards a pledge of $1,000. Do I have a motion?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Second. First for Mr. Daffler, second for Mr. Ansler.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Ansler?
Yes.
Okay, and the board, of course, would like to thank everyone that made donations. Some of those were quite sizable donations this month, so special thanks to the, to the Myersburg Band Boosters. They are quite an organization to say the least. They, they're, they're pretty special. Mr. Homan, you want to say anything? You're pretty close with them.
That's good, but I did want to talk about the other two donations that were on here for the gymnastics floor mat. We are, we are partnering very similar like we do with the band boosters in helping splitting that cost between the boosters and athletic PI funds, so I think it's a good opportunity for replacement of items in the district to kind of share those costs with it, so we are very grateful for them, for the donations from the athletic boosters as well.
Is that floor mat, is that the one that's upstairs?
It's, it's actually going to be the roll mats that are going to be replaced up there, but we are going to do some repairs on the gymnastics floor too.
I already did.
Okay. So we got two reports. Mr. Joe Zakovich from the MVC, TDC.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Our applications for the class of 2025 keep rolling in. As of today, we've received 1,470. For comparison, at this point in 2021, we had 1,058 and in 2022, we had 1,322 and I think part of that was the fact that we were starting to demolish and starting construction. But it shows there was an increase of 264 between 21 and 22 and another increase of 148 between 2022 and this week, so we're moving along quite nicely. The other thing, we're increasing our programs. Obviously, we're working to increase our satellites. We have four programs going in at Huber Heights. We have the new ag program going in here at Miami'sburg. Northridge, we have health sciences going in and then at CTC, we are going to have a drones program, pre-engineering, pre-law and legal studies and we're adding a second section to our vet science program, so we're moving along and doing quite nicely in that regard. Just to give you an example, the initial district headcount enrollment in 2012 was 2,731 students. Looking at the current school year, our headcount enrollment at the end of December of 2022 was 5,157 students, 188% increase and we would expect for 2023, 2024, around 5,500, so we're moving along quite nicely and that doesn't include the adult ed, which is over 2,000 adult students also. An important item, our National Technical Honor Society tapping ceremony took place. We have 124 students going into this. The official induction ceremony will be held on Sunday, March 19th from 2:00 to 4:00 in our MAC and we invite all of you to attend. We're really well represented this year. You have to maintain a 3.75 GPA by the end of the first semester, senior year, no more than four days of absences and no discipline issues. So from Miami'sburg, we have Anthony Ewing in robotics and automation, Elisa Grimm, dental assisting, Nathaniel Kessel, he's in aviation maintenance, Michael Newbauer in Hy-Vac, Jenna Samples in animal care and management, Travis Templeton, robotics and automation, Mallory Velez, graphic commercial art, and Kayla Wills, pre-nursing. Real good representation for Miami'sburg when you consider we have 27 partner schools, so we're quite pleased with that. Also, on January 31st, students from our natural resource management program competed in the environmental and natural resource career development event and juniors Dylan Gooch from Vandelia Butler, Griffin Jung from Miami'sburg, Sean Trogston from Arcanum Butler and Garrett Fetgader from Bethel finished in first place in the state environmental natural resources qualifier and Griffin Jung placed fourth with a score of 98, so that will allow them to continue at the state finals at Hawking College in April. Also, our early childhood education students earned their industry credential and Lily Riddle from Miami'sburg earned her child development associate credential. Also, our BPA, Business Practices Program had competition in Columbus and C++ programming first place by Aiden Freeman, computer coding and web applications Miami'sburg, computer network technology second place, Elijah Rose, computer networking and cybersecurity. Intermediate word processing skills, third place, Kaden Hanke from Miami'sburg, Python programming first place, Jeremiah Bird from Miami'sburg. And basically a quick construction update, any of you that have headed out north on Hope Road to the campus, on the right side obviously is the main campus. The buildings right up against the edge of the road are being demoed now and getting prepared to finish up so that we can complete the campus by August of this year, so we're moving along quite nicely. So, any questions or comments?
Can you have the, can you have some of those students take the leftover bricks and everything and build up a new school out on Union Road?
We, we can do that, we can do that. If we, well, in fact, we just found our one stolen trailer, we can use that to move the bricks out. It's, it's crazy and, you know, looking at the last year, trailers have been a big item for theft, landscapers, contractors, what have you, and one of our robotics trailers was sitting there, it was donated to us, we didn't have the Ramtech wrap on it and from what I hear, two individuals walked into construction wearing hard hats and, and bibs and hooked up the trailer and off they went. Fortunately, unfortunately for them, we think they came back the one night that's been in the newspaper and they were arrested and they found the, the majority of our items, so you just never know, but in any event, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to Mr. Corey Daffler, he learned legislatively a lot.
I'm going to start off with just a couple general things that I've learned. This is interesting, I'm interested in government boring stuff, but this is 135th General Assembly. Ohio has a two-year legislative session, the state fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th of the following year. The state operating budget is passed in even numbered years, the state capital budget is passed in offsetting odd numbered years and Ohio is required for a balanced budget unlike our federal government, which we like to spend beyond our means. For the year 2223, the general state operating budget was a total of 3,616 pages. The amended 702 sections of parliament law, 154 which were educational, enacted 158 new sections, which were, 42 of those were educational, and repealed 242 sections of the revised code. 3,037 pages of parliament law, 647 of the parliament law changes, education, always changing, you never know what's going on, this is the difficulty in what these guys deal with on a regular basis. 579 pages of appropriations and temporary law changes. Additionally, it included thousands of line items appropriations, hundreds of provisions, delimiting those line items and numerous provisions of temporary laws. The, for the overhaul, Ohio Department of Education, the largest expenditures include the fair school funding plan continuation, the per pupil increase for high quality charter and community schools of up to 3,000 per pupil, expansion of Ed Choice scholarship up to 400%, placement of school resource officers in every school with a total biennium of For all four categories, the state will expand 11 billion in fiscal year 24. The state will invest 174.1 million to improve literacy. Governor DeWine gave the state of the state, January 31st, some of his main educational related provisions would be the continual phase in of the fair school funding plan, providing funding for any public or private that wants to hire a resource officer, that's where some of that money is going, providing 100 million to launch new in-demand career tech programs and industry's recognized credential programs across the state, increase the eligibility of Ed Choice vouchers, require ODE to support up to 100 additional literacy coaches in schools, continue funding for tutoring services, provide additional college credit plus funding to provide additional training for teachers to instruct classes on high school campuses. Then there's a couple senate bills that I'm going to keep an eye on here. One that I talked about last month, Senate Bill 1, trying to take the powers away from the ODE. I think it is in its second committee hearing. We don't really want that to go through, we kind of want to keep it, the power in the ODE. Senate Bill 5, this would establish a workforce voucher program that awards vouchers to students at public and private institutions of higher school education seeking degrees, certifications, license and demand jobs to require each public high school, including community and STEM schools, school counselors annually to inform all 11th graders, notify all 11th grade students about the workforce voucher program and to promote the program and to require ODE to notify annually each public high school of the requirements. Senate Bill 6, this is, would prohibit STRS and SERS among others from making investment decisions for the primary purpose of influence environmental, social and corporate governance policy. Senate Bill 14, to allow school districts to employ veterans of the US Armed Forces that have met certain requirements to be employed as teachers. I think we might benefit from this with Wright-Patt being around and with the workforce the way it is. Senate Bill 17, to require the state board to update standards and model curriculum for financial literacy in entrepreneurships in grades nine through 12 to include free market capitalism content. I'm done with the boring legislation.
Thank you. Yeah, there's, there's a lot going on, that's for sure. Ms. Moore, he made a comment about the college credit plus in there and if you don't mind, I don't know if you know anything about it yet, but if you could get something for the board, how that's going to affect us, I, I haven't been able to figure it out myself.
I will look into it more, I don't think it'll have much of an impact on us. I mean, our college credit plus program's pretty good and pretty solid, we have teachers that are already certified that went through, the ones that wanted to be certified and what we have offered, but I'll do a little more digging, but.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, next is our student achievement liaison, Mr. Chris Ansler and Chris, I'm going to go on ahead and let you do the district news and information since all of it's about student achievement anyway, so if you don't mind.
Okay, all right, I can do that. On the student of the month, as you know, we had Bear Elementary School, Mr. Casey Jackson, but others receiving recognition this month is Bauer Elementary School, Nora Medcath, Jane Chance Elementary School, Cadence Adcock, Kinder Elementary School. Medcath, Jane Chance Elementary School, Cadence Adcock, Kinder Elementary School, Lucas Pickett, Mark Twain Elementary School, Kennedy Ritz, Medlerview, Malik Zia, Mound Elementary, Stephanie Sobbo, and the Miami'sburg Middle School, Adeline Harmon, and Miami'sburg High School, Alyssa Wilkerson. District news, signing day saw eight MHS students commit to further their academic and athletic careers at the next level. Desmond Owens for the University of Dayton for football. A.J. Sally, Houston Christian University, football. Brayden Davis, Wayne State University, Division Two, and that would be football. Cassidy Elzy, Ohio Northern University, Division Three, lacrosse. Jason Ball, Bowling Green State University, Division One, soccer. Sidney Little, Wittenberg University, Division Three, softball. And Aubrey Garrison, Indiana Tech University, wrestling. And Mia Shoemaker, Wittenberg University, Division Three, in tennis. So congratulations to those eight individuals further in their education and athletic careers. Miami'sburg High School District was privileged to have three students from the Miami'sburg Middle School chosen for the College Credit Promise Scholarship Program. Mikola Dorsey, Cole Longstruth, and...
Ekaterina Demitrieva.
Okay, thank you. Were chosen from our district to receive this incredible opportunity. The selected students, upon the successful completion of high school and meeting the entrance requirements of the partner college or university, are awarded scholarships that allow them to attend college at little or no cost to them for their families. So that would be the district news and information.
Thank you for doing that. Next, we'll have Mrs. Ann Neese. She will, Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition.
Yeah, we had no meeting this month. They're doing every other month, so nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to Board Comments. Starting the end down there?
I would like to start with Ms. Riley Davis. You have sat there very patiently and listened to all this, and your confidence at the mic was quite impressive, I must say. Very impressed with that. The middle school presentation was great as well. I wanted to hit on the programming that we've been going through and just, you know, one principal told me at one of the town halls that, at the beginning, you know, it was kinda odd because this was the first time that they realized what transparency looked like. So, just like to let, you know, everybody know that some of the things that we're doing don't really have to be done. And the feedback from the public is great. It's awesome. This is probably something we should've done a long time ago, and Dr. Blessing has done a great job with getting the public involved and everybody's input. And that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Ansler?
I too would like to congratulate Ms. Riley. You did a wonderful job. All your accomplishments at such a young age, I cannot even begin to fathom everything that you do. But you have a wonderful daughter. And for you guys to sit here and stay here for the next, the last hour and fifteen minutes, I'm sure it's a meeting that you probably won't forget for a while. Also, I would like to say congratulations to our retirees. You're, you're absolutely right. I worked with Kathy's husband for a number of years at the fire department, and she is quite a remarkable lady, and I'm sure her phone will ring more than once during the week to sub. So, other than that, I will pass it on to Ms. Ann.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate Barb and Kathy. It's interesting, Barb and I, when we were young girls, were in 4H together. So, that's pretty cool. Also, to thank the middle school for the presentation. All those things are really cool that you're doing. And Riley, I have a granddaughter, and I want her to follow you. Which, which social media would be best? Instagram? Okay. And yes, I was very impressed by you. You have quite the resume already. Yeah. And also, I wanted to say something about the Mid East Performance Association that was held the last week in January. Our elementary, Mr. Homan told me it's, the acronym is MEPA. Our elementary color guard came in first place. Our A-guard, I think is sixth to seventh grade, is that right? Okay, they came in second place. Our world guard came in first place. And then the wins came in first place. So congratulations to them all.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis?
Well, I wanted to welcome our new treasurer, Justin Blevins, to his first official board meeting. Congratulations to our three middle school students chosen for the College Promise Scholarship Program. That's awesome. Wanted to thank Officer Copsy and Officer Albert, our student resource officers. Yesterday was National School Resource Officer Day. Last week was National School Counseling Week. So thank you to all of our counselors for all they do. Congratulations to Barb Hoffman and Kathy Schmitz on their retirements. And Riley, what does Mr. C's voice sound like? What was the name of the show again?
It's called DIY Science.
Thank you.
Okay. Riley, you're just getting all kinds of accolades tonight, aren't you? And deserving, and you deserve them. And seriously, I will vote for you for president. I'd like to welcome Mr. Blevins. I can assure you that having chosen him to be our next treasurer, I think you all will find out that it was a very wise move and that he's a good man. I did a lot of research on him, and I couldn't find any dirt. So he is definitely, we're looking forward to working with him. The town halls that we did, we got a lot of good ideas from parents and teachers that it helped us to adjust some of our plans as we went along. The surveys, we already have a large number of them that's been turned in. And like I said, I literally, I wasn't kidding when I said I put an hour and a half to two hours into reading them already. Very, there was a lot of very interesting comments and things already from staff and parents. And thank you for that. Barb Hoffman and I also were in school together years ago. She was a lot older than me, a whole year. But anyways, her, her family, her last name was Early, and her family was a well-known family in Miami'sburg. Her father owned a nursery on London Avenue that a lot of people drove by for years, a huge glass building that he had built there. And it was always fun going in there and talking to him. He's, he's gone now, but Barb, I had the pleasure of working at the high school with her. She was the secretary out there for the offices, and she did a wonderful job. She was a very, very hard worker. And Kathy Schmidt, thank you again. She was around when I was around. And she has done a super job for the school. And I'd like to thank, she's, she's kinda shy, but we thank a lot of her. I'd like to wish good luck. Well, first of all, thank the, thank the counselors, Mr. Copsy, Officer Copsy. And then I'd like to wish good luck to our band and our guard. There's a lot of competitions coming up here that are pretty big for them. And we wish them lots of luck and I would say break a leg, but I don't know if that's proper or not for the band and guard. But and our athletes, I know it's not proper for them, but we have athletes going to some of the district and regionals and even to the state competitions. So keep them in your prayers that everybody comes back not injured. And I will pass it along to our new treasurer, Mr. Blevins. Yeah, talk louder now.
I don't have any comments. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Sorry. I was one trip. I was supposed to adjourn it or what? So, sorry about that. Yeah.
Yeah. Not know what they're doing tonight. You're good job. Okay, Mr. Homan?
So Riley, I want to thank you for being an excellent role model for our middle school students. And, you know, thank your parents for being such awesome parents and raising such a wonderful daughter and, and having the opportunity to share it with the middle school. So, so continue the great things you do. You're, you're gonna go very, very far. So, reach for those dreams. So. And in terms of, I know Kelly talked about the career opportunities at the middle school. This past week, we had an opportunity to, during eighth-grade plan, Bob Newpower put together a program in which, really exposing our students to all the different careers out there, whether if you're college-bound or workforce-bound in terms of that. And there are some really great opportunities out there. And Bob doesn't always get the kudos of what goes on, but he puts a lot of work out there. And those middle school students, Kelly, like you said, they're really looking at that. I just think we're heading in the right direction. And the cooperation we have with the MVCTC and the programs they have out there and tech prep programs, we do a lot of great things in this district, and we, and we offer lots of great opportunities for all of our students, whichever, whichever bound they are. So, kudos to that. And then also, I'm gonna plug in for Cafe 301. Out there, if you've not done Cafe 301, it is fabulous. They make the best desserts out there. But if you have an opportunity to visit and go out and pick up lunch out there when they make it, it's, it's an excellent program that they do out there. So. And I do want to welcome Justin as well. So, he is man of few words. So we're trying to really break him out of that. So.
Before I go to Dr. Blessing, Ahmed, you have anything that you wanted to say? You've been a hard, hard worker, and I've spent a lot of time with Ahmed lately, so I just wondered if, I don't want to surprise you or anything, but if you'd like to make a comment.
No, I don't think so. I appreciate the opportunity, but I think that all of the work is important. And, you know, I appreciate that the community and the board and the district coming together to consider the diversity of the basketball students in the county.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Blessing?
Thank you. Riley, can I get a selfie afterwards? And maybe, are you gonna give out autographs tonight? Because that's pretty exciting. I mean, we have a celebrity with us. And I, I think Mr. Klein at the high school is taking notes because they recruit very talented folks coming up. And I know Mr. Black has a social media campaign that he likes students to head up. So they might be looking at you for one of their, their future social media because they, they, he has a student right now handling all his social media, and it's fantastic. So it sounds like you have a lot of those skills. So watch out. They might be recruiting you. And thank you, Ms. Thomas. Great program tonight, a presentation about the middle school. It's always nice to hear about our schools. I want to thank the governor's office and the Ohio General Assembly. They have graciously given our district a million dollars this year. So that is pretty fantastic for school safety. So we got a little bit of money for our night locks, and then we got a little bit of money for the high school, a hundred thousand. And then in round four, I think, we got the remainder of what we had asked for, for each elementary and middle school. So each school is getting one hundred thousand dollars for safety. So that is fantastic. Some of the things we can use that for, replacing interior and exterior doors, new windows or extra screening for those windows, some visitor procedures that are a little more universal across our district, focus on parking lots and safety, visitor control, mass communication systems, intrusion surveillance. Also, even if a door is maybe left open, it gives us the opportunity to not walk around at the high school and check fifty-five doors before the night ends or how many. So some, some great options that we have. So Mr. Homan is really excited to be working with our safety department, Mr., I mean Officer Copsy and Officer Albert, to start looking at some plans for those funds. So very appreciative of that.
And we just, just talked with Ryan and Ben this week. And so we'll be sending out invites to all the principals to set meetings up, to go through and really almost to walk through your building. And I call it a talk and walk and see what we need to do, what you'd like to see for your building. So you'll be seeing invites coming out soon. And, but yeah, it's pretty much hot off the press. So we're pretty excited. So.
And then I, I want to give a shout out to our elementary principals and our Mrs. Dobson and Mrs. Lucas and Mr. Homan, and also our board members. And Justin attended the town hall as well. Those principals, if they were able, came to every town hall. That's eight cabinet members, the board members came two at a time. That was almost over forty hours of their time over the last six weeks. So I appreciate your, your willingness to, to be a part of the team and, and get our community involved in gaining that input. So we appreciate all of your time away from your families during those evenings. For those of you who don't know, Monday and Wednesdays for the last six weeks, we have all been in different schools. So I appreciate that. So thank you.
You. Anything else, folks? Next, we'll go to public comments. And we have a green sheet from Sandra Co. You have three minutes?
I'm only, Sandra Co., nineteen twenty-one, Cudgel Drive, Miami'sburg, Ohio. A former teacher here, retired for almost eleven years. Miami'sburg City Schools are extremely important to the Co. family. When my husband was alive, he was very supportive of the school district, especially the sports because our daughter Megan played. And the band program, he was a music major even though he owned his own business. But our son Nicholas was in the band for five years. Megan made it one year, and thank God, that's all she had to go. Both my kids graduated from Miami'sburg High School. I have a granddaughter who's a third grader with Mrs. Lee Marker at Mark Twain. She loves school. And I have a grandson, Memphis Alexander Co., who is seven years old and is in the MH program at Jane Chance. Thank you, Mr. Guyer. He spends part of his time in the MH program. And then he goes to Kim Toadvine, who is a quote typical first grade teacher, whatever a typical teacher is nowadays. And he goes there for first grade. He is my Rain Man. You can give that young man any numbers, and he can do with them whatever you ask him to do. I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about our MH program with some of the proposals that have been made. I just want to make sure that every child in this district, whether they are gifted or they are MH, are taken care of. And that's a, a big concern of mine. The other thing I'm concerned about is teachers. Teachers, some of the teachers are gonna be in new buildings. They're gonna be in teaching new grades. They could have split classes. Split classes are not fun. I've not taught one for a while, but it takes a lot of work. I want to make sure that... I want to make sure that our teachers that are in those positions, that they have support from the district, time, and just make sure that they're able to learn new curriculums so that they can do the best that they can when they're teaching our kids. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I got emotional.
It's okay. Thank you, Sandra. Okay. Next, we move to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
First, from Mr. Daffler. Second, from Mr. Lewis. Call please.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
We are officially adjourned at 7:32.